Mr. Placko, can you call the roll please?
All right.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Steven Jeffries.
Here.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi. Motion carried. That takes us to special reports, Mr. Kales.
We do have a few special reports today, Ms. Harden. Did you want to start with the boosters first, or would you like Kay?
Yeah, we could.
These are the boosters that they can take off if they'd like to. I would like to say first, and thank, we've got all of our booster organizations here between our PTOs and our athletic boosters and all the support groups, and I want to thank everyone for being here tonight because not only are you here, which is extremely important, but without all of you, we certainly cannot make all the great things that happen at Riverside possible. So, I appreciate very much all the hard work you do and the volunteer hours you put in, and appreciate you being here as well, so we can formally acknowledge all of our groups today.
It's really evident in the past few years when we made our cuts back in 2010 to 2012, that a lot of these booster groups have stepped up and tried to make it a little bit better for our student athletes because our paid participation fees were high. And I know that sometimes it's a distraction, but we do have a lot of people out there that have put in a lot of effort to make it easier for our student athletes to participate.
Absolutely, and then our parent groups bring in, you know, carts of Chromebooks and things like that. We've really had some really great things happening in our buildings, too.
Yeah, and not only the athletics, but also other parents that are out there.
Everyone.
I don't want to leave anybody out, just anyone that has helped us now, we really appreciate all that you do.
Yes.
Did you want to do each one individually?
Yeah.
Organize each one individually?
Yeah, organize each one individually. If you could just stand up and let us know.
Okay, because I'm not sure if everybody was able to make it because there's 18 different groups, and it was a lot of work to try to get the requests for information out there and figure out who's coming and not, so I guess you want me to name one?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. So, the Riverside rebounders basketball boosters.
And who are you?
Hi, Ms. Gres. Is there a light back here? Okay.
There we go.
Thank you for being here. Now we can see you.
We've got LaMouth AMSCO.
AMSCO.
Hi, Beth.
There you are. Hi, Beth.
Okay, and then we have, we're not in any particular, Buckeye Elementary PTA. And then we have RHS Gridiron Club.
Good evening. Bob Simpson with the Gridiron.
Thank you.
We have the RBI Club.
Ross Forble.
And the Melridge Elementary PTO.
Nancy Bush, the section committee.
The Riverside Flying R Booster Club.
Brady Myers and Erin Rice.
It's apparent by the shirt. Perfect.
And we have the Riverside Dan Boosters.
Teresa Strock, the president.
The Courtside Club.
Michelle Ferschner, treasurer.
Clyde C. Haddon Elementary Community Organization.
Cynthia Mahoney, president.
Hale Road Elementary Community Organization.
Is that the PTO?
Yeah.
Okay, Kerry Mikey, vice president.
We've got the Leroy School Association.
Claudia Soffit, co-vice president.
Madison Avenue School Community Organization.
Christina Hammond, vice president.
Riverside Local Wrestling Club.
Carl Peterson, treasurer.
Riverside Soccer Club. And we have the volleyball boosters. The choir boosters. And then there's the athletic booster club, which I know they couldn't make it today, we just got the name of the new person to go over.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here? Okay. Surprise. That's all. And I have copies of all the signed agreements.
Soccer right here. Sorry, we had a game over there, we charged the concessions, and sorry.
Who won the game?
It's just started.
Oh!
So, we have agreements from everybody that approved.
Excellent. Well, good, and like I said, you know, part of everyone getting formally approved is just so that, you know, like I said, that Mr. Placko gets all of everyone's information, so we know that everyone's doing everything to save, should be, and we follow board policy, which is always important, so, um, thank you all again, too, like I said, if you all want to go, we totally understand, we're not offended. If you don't want to stay, you're welcome to stay, but, um, that was easy and quick. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. I also want to say, like, it's really nice to be able to put faces to names sometimes because we don't always get to do that, so, thanks for coming.
All right. What's next, Mr. Kales?
We have Michelle Walker from Haddon, that will be giving a presentation about Haddon Elementary.
I'm also going to talk about the wellness program.
Okay.
I want to share a little bit about the wellbeing program that our district has going on for the employees. I'm really excited about it. I could have talked all night about wellness, but I'm not going to do that, I'm just going to keep it very short and brief. I met with all the reps today to try to think about some ways that we could use a small stipend of money, actually, it's not so small, it's pretty significant, it's about $10,000. And we decided that we are going to buy a Vitamix for every building, and then bring in fresh food once in a while, like, maybe three or four times. And we're looking at some other things to do with that money also. And we have to actually put together a proposal and give it to the consortium, and then they'll make that determination as to how we can use the money for a lot of use of money for that. But that was a really good idea, I thought it would benefit all of our employees, so, anyone at John R. if they decide they want to make a protein drink or a smoothie, and throw some vegetables in their protein mix, and fruit, whatever they want, that'll help keep them healthy and energized, and of course, they taste really good. So, we have three classes going on in our district throughout the week, and we have one at LaMouth after school on Thursdays, one at Haddon on Wednesdays, and one geared towards transportation and evening custodians on Monday morning. So, I'm really excited that we have three classes going on for everybody. We also have seven and a half hours of coaching from Kelsey. Kelsey goes to different buildings every week, and she's there for about two and a half hours in each building, wherever she's scheduled for that week. So, people can go in, get help, try to sign up, work on getting their pre-assessment scheduled, and so she can answer any kind of questions in terms of health and wellness. Eventually, she's going to be helping to do some different individual coaching based on what the people's needs are, and maybe showing people how to use exercises and so forth. Right now, I'm pleased to say that we have 167 people that have registered and have started working the program, and every single person that registers by the end of September will receive workout bands, and Kelsey will help show everybody how to use those, those post-game sessions. During the month of October, to encourage those people that haven't registered yet, that have looked at my many emails and the building rep's many emails, we are going to raffle off a couple gift cards just to entice them, and building or group with the highest reputation will also have a special gift card raffled off to those buildings. So, we have a lot of really good ideas and plans and works to start off the new year, because as you know, when you're healthy, when you feel good, you come to work, and you have a better attitude, you feel good about what you're doing, and we want everybody to feel fantastic, and of course, eventually, our healthcare costs will go down as a result of that, so I'm really happy about that. And every contracted employee in our district does not participate now, which was not something that was allowed up until about two weeks ago.
Yeah, before it was just people that were enrolled in the healthcare plan, now it's open to employees.
Yes, but I wasn't happy about that, so.
Just a beer.
Is that available, too, with your spouses also? Is it not?
I'm sorry. We opened it up to the first 10 spouses that would like to participate, and we will pay for that, so, yes, spouses can participate. After that, they'll only be charged $89 for participation, which is an incredible deal. They will not be eligible for the quarterly stipends. Our employees can actually earn up to $400 a year for doing things like exercising, logging what they eat, taking CEUs, volunteering. So, if they volunteer for their church or United Way, I volunteer for United Way, I now get a little perk because of it. So, there's lots of different ways and options for people to earn some money, so.
Sorry, that's your question?
Okay. All right, now I'm going to talk about Haddon, and I have Cynthia Mahoney here, my board president, to help me talk about Haddon. We have spent an incredible amount of time putting together a slideshow for you, and I would like to remind all of you, they do this September 27th, okay? I'm saying that because it's very hard to believe that we have done what we've done in the last month of school. So, this slideshow is about to commence, because I know that it will only have your attention for a short time. Mr. Kales will cut me off. So, last spring, we started our library improvement project, this is what our library looked like before we started this project, and this was quite a huge undertaking. Cynthia actually wrote a grant proposal to Lowe's, and we received some funding from Lowe's, and we also used some of our building budget and some of our PTO budget in order to create a new library. So, we had quite a few volunteers, James, our custodian, and some of our parents helped to wash walls and to paint. We had teachers that were involved in the process, that's a Lowe's crew, they just volunteered for the day. So, they came over, they worked in the library, and I ran a United Way meeting next door, and then I ran over and helped to get the courses, it was quite an exciting day. And I run into them all the time at Lowe's, they are willing to do whatever they can to help us. They actually gave us all the furniture at a very minimal cost, so I'm excited about that. We put new bookcases in there, tables, we could see the disaster. This was done with a very small group of individuals helping, and children, and it was literally a disaster. But, um, we, I think there was only kind of like two days that we did not have kids in the library either checking out books or on those computers, so that was by some kind of miracle. We got the shelves in at Phases, and we had kids helping, so, and I just asked, I said, "Who wants to volunteer and help me take the books off the shelves and, you know, put the bookshelves together and put new books in there?" And all the kids, I mean, tons of kids helped with that project, and I'm delighted that we had so much help. But at that time, I just wanted to get it done, I wasn't focused on taking a bunch of pictures. So, this is what it looks like after. It is, this has become my favorite space in the entire building, and I know it's become the favorite space for many of the children also. And this was actually Cynthia's brainchild, she is the one that wanted to have a new library, set it to be a facelift, and she is the one that made that happen. So, it was a lot of fun to order all the furniture and the carpets and everything else, and just to see how it has just brought the whole room to life. We started our annual Be a Reader program, this is our fourth year, right? I'm just thrilled with our kickoff. We have a building leadership team, worked very tirelessly to put together an incredible program for our kids, a great kickoff assembly for the kids, and when we put together, we have daily trivia questions, and when the kids answer the questions, I do a random drawing and give them a little container of soup, and a little band that says "I Like to Read," reading rocks, and we have some erasers we just got, too. So, the kids are excited about that. Teachers are also doing a lot of different activities, they're making bookmarks, they're doing story board, one of the teachers did a story board, they can listen to the story on the website. One of the teachers put together some vocabulary, one vocabulary word for each chapter, and then put together a vocabulary quiz. Chris painted a mural for us, so we now have four murals, and we kept that covered the first day of school, so nobody saw it. We unveiled that after our assembly. It was a little bit hard to be up in this big, huge pea dress up on the ladder getting that, ah, tear the paper off. This year, Matt Dietz, who works at Classic Lexus, who is also one of our parents, actually worked with Classic Lexus to fund this entire program. They donated $2,500 to the program, and we spent just over $1,700 on the books, so that every child could have a book in hand, and every Hispanic child actually has a Spanish copy also. So, I'm thrilled that we had that support from him. We also paid for the costumes and some other things, we'll be watching the movie as a building, the entire, the kids will get to watch the movie, and they'll do a little compare and contrast with the story in the movie. We have a lot of exciting activities planned, next Monday, we're having soup, because soup is a big thing in the story. We're also doing a soup can drive, collecting soup to give to the Salvation Army, we're creating a soup recipe for, and, um, those are just a few things. We're going to create some kind of piece of artwork for the library, and I'll let Cynthia tell you a little bit about that. We did it with our, one of our other books, too, and the kids absolutely love it, it's beautiful. So, these are some of the bookmarks that the kids made. Sophie showing off her snacks, her soup that she got, kids reading and just interacting, and just enjoying the library and the book. It's going to be a really, really great year, it is September 27th, and this is what we have accomplished so far. We have board members that have come to our building, we have sent for office employees that came on the first day. Our first graders were doing a funny, fun, exciting activity where they got to know each other and built some trust within just a total little bit about themselves through the stream across the room, so I don't want to include that. We had a nice visit from fire marshals, because we did our practice fire drill, and somebody forgot and turned on the wrong alarm system at protection launch, so the fire department came over and got to walk around and greet all the kids. We had a breakfast, we had ice cream for breakfast to celebrate our kids that read from Morley Library Reading Program, and for those of you that don't know much about me, I'm a little bit of a coconut, and I don't believe in eating ice cream very often, and so to have ice cream for breakfast is huge in our building. So, we had a lot of exciting things happening. Third graders went to Pioneer School, learned a lot about what school was like back in the olden days, so. And I know I missed a couple of the slides because I'm talking. We also had our fifth graders, oh, no, I'm sorry, we had our Super YMCA program, superhero day. The kids had a great time, they got to wear capes and be superheroes, they learned a little bit about nutrition, and they got to exercise outside. And they're doing a three-week challenge right now, and then the YMCA will come back and talk to them about their challenge and will celebrate their accomplishments. Kids also made superhero costumes, they liked capes, and wrote things that they liked about themselves on the capes, so it was a good self-esteem activity. Our fifth graders got to use the compasses today and walk around the backyard and try to find the geocaching, and they participate in the flag etiquette program, and they're going to start, I have a group of kids that is going to start raising the flag tomorrow. And our fourth graders have already gone to the farm. So, quite a bit happening just in the month of September. We already have some corporate sponsors just for this year, Farmers Insurance has partnered with us to do a Thanks a Million Teacher Presentation or Recognition Program, and they will actually be giving one teacher a month, some gift cards, and just coming in and celebrating how hard they worked. We have a nice plaque that will be hung up in the front hall, I already know who the first one is, person's going to be, and I would love to tell you, but Mrs. Mahoney might go back to the building and tell that teacher, so it's going to be a surprise on Tuesday morning for that teacher. And it is actually some, one of the teachers was, the first teacher was chosen because of her work and participation in getting this Be a Reader program launched, so. We have a lot of corporate sponsors, and we have a lot of great activities happening for the rest of the year. Cynthia, you want to add some things?
Um, just quickly, we couldn't have done the library project without the help of Lowe's. Rick Loomis, who is the head of their ordering and purchasing for their contractors, was instrumental, and Rick Brusma, who is the actual manager of the store, he came in and he's like, "What do you need?" And they have also said, "What else do you need?" So, we hope to work with them a little bit more this year as the year goes on with a few other things. The library is still not done, there's still a lot to do, but we, at least, are functioning, and it looks nice now, it looks pretty. And of course, Kathleen Janich was instrumental in a lot of stuff, she's one of our teachers, and she's just still giving it her time. As usual, we hit the ground running, we don't really stop at Haddon. Last year, after I gave my presentation, Mrs. Mahoney's like, "I'm just exhausted looking to you." And it's pretty much the same way. This year is kind of, it's exciting for me because we were in a year of transition last year, trying to figure out what direction the board was going to go and how we were going to change things up by approaching corporate sponsors, applying for grants, doing things we've never done before. And this year, it's my last year at Haddon, so this year, it's a different type of transition, it's getting everybody sort of in place so that when I leave, they're not going to be sort of standing around saying, "Well, what do we do now?" And it's not that I'm high on myself that they can't survive without me, it's just there's no written history of how things work, so that's what this year will be about, is working with the parents.
They asked her to adopt a child. To.
Yeah. I will still be in the, I'm a substitute, so I'll still be in the building through substituting. But basically, we just, a lot of great things are planned this year, we hope to upgrade the sound system in the gym, we hope to continue to work on the library and just put those mission touches on it, and everything that we're doing, we're keeping the levy in mind, and hoping that whatever we do to improve this year will obviously transition into new buildings, and also just really sort of keep Haddon moving forward, which is our ultimate goal. We had a phenomenal year last year, we were able to do so much, and we're hoping that we can do the same this year. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Okay. That takes us to old business, then. Does anyone have anything under old business?
Yes, I do. During our finance meeting that we had this month, we went over the finance report for the paid participation fees. I would like for Gary, if possible, if you could go over this with the entire board and the community, to show that we're not only contributing 20%, but it's closer to 30, 40%. And we've been fielding a lot of phone calls regarding this, and I think this would be something that the whole community needs to hear.
Okay. You know, this year, we, the board voted to keep the fees the same this year as last year, I think with the intention of making things simpler, but there was some unintended consequences of what happened to the store donations this year, and what happens if participation changes drastically, and so, before we could figure out where we're going, we had to figure out where we're at. So, what I did for the finance committee was I put together the actual cost from last year, the 2015-2016 school year, just to kind of figure out where we're at, because the fees, you know, are set based on the prior year, so 15, 16 fees are set on 14, 15's actual cost, and maybe some adjustments for some changes that are coming up, so it's a little bit of lag. So, when I put the cost calculations together, just looking at 9th through 12th grade sports, the total cost to the board, which includes your salaries for coaches, your payroll cost, like retirement, allocating athletic director, transportation cost, and athletic trainer cost, the total cost of 9th through 12th sports was just over $425,000. So, if you took 20% of that for the board contribution, that's about $85,000 towards 9th through 12th sports. The support groups gave us about $35,500 towards those, you know, different amounts in different organizations. So, then when you factor in how many participants we actually had, multiplied by the fee we charged, you kind of compare what we charged against what the fee should have been, and then whatever that difference is, is another contribution basically the board made. In all cases, you know, we charged less than the actual cost, so, I figured out that, you know, the board's 20% contribution of $85,000 through 9th through 12th sports, the boosters gave us another $35,000, and basically, the board ended up absorbing the cost of another $33,000. So, on 9th through 12th sports, we're looking at about $115,000 is the board contribution. And then, looking at 7th through 8th grade sports, the total cost of all sports is just over $90,000. So, the board contribution will be about $18,000, support groups gave us just shy of $6,000. So, when we calculated everything out, the additional board contribution is another $3,000 on top of that. So, in all in all, we're looking at about $130-some thousand is what the board actually ended up contributing last year. So, that was kind of like we went over that in detail, and I can provide those spreadsheets for the rest of the board if they want to review that, you know, and have any questions regarding that.
Thank you. So, any other old business? New business? All right, we will. That takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports, Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison, we have not had a meeting, but we were just talking about.
We were, I was talking about Principal Liatsos and also Hugh Manos, the teachers who do their career in college training this program.
Correct.
And we would like to extend an invitation to anybody that would like to be on that Business Advisory, any local companies out there that would like to come in. We've had some of the same ones over and over again, and as much as we do appreciate their help, it would be nice to get a few more businesses that could participate as well. I'm hoping that Mr. Manos, he has reached out to some of these groups, he's not working, and we're trying to get some that we're going to be directly working with with our kids, so, once we get that together, we aim to set up a meeting.
Sounds good. All right, that takes us to Mr. Miley, Curriculum and Programming and Boosters.
Okay, I'll start with the booster club. We had a meeting September 16th, where all of the schools that were present, we talked about board recognition and treasures request, we've talked about levy updates, issue five, and then each of the buildings went through things that are going on. There's a lot of great things going on in every building. They're truly parent-student oriented, there's pizza bingos, there's book fairs, there's spirit days, there's restaurant nights, there's too many to mention. And similar to what we just heard about what was going on at Haddon in the first month, it's like that in every building, and we appreciate that, and that truly brings it back to a, um, a school-parent-student relationship that is growing daily, which is very nice. With regards to the Curriculum and Programming Committee, I was not able to attend, so Mr. Hack's going to give a short summary on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Miley. So, we did have a Curriculum and Programs meeting, I would say, in the first week of September, and it was a very interesting conversation, in that we talked about a lot of the different programs we have in place, and we have a lot of the emphasis clearly at people who are going through and learning skill sets in Auburn, and we also have a large group of people who are students who graduate and go on to college. We talked a little bit about the people who are not necessarily part of a trade curriculum and not necessarily going to college, and how we might have further conversations on how to help those kids make the transition from an education environment here at Riverside into the actual real world. And that's just one thing that personally I'm very interested in, because we need to make sure we help all, the whole spectrum of kids that come through the school. Additionally, one thing that I was pretty excited about, and I can't remember the name of it, but we got some, bought into a program that helps people, helps students take basically a questionnaire, and it helps them identify areas of interest and expertise to help them and direct them towards what career fields they might pursue once they leave Riverside. And Mrs. Mahoney, if you could expand upon that a little bit?
I could. It's called Naviance, it's the program, and it's, we will be rolling it out to our students, hopefully, within the next month or so. And it does have an interest inventory component, where the kids that'll match jobs that are based on their interests, and also has an assessment for the kids, and assessment, I don't mean a test that they take and there's something attached to it, it's almost like a personality test, and this one, they're only allowed to take once through their whole high school career, because the understanding is, is that these traits do not change, so they don't want you to take it while they're real young, but then they match with what personality traits you have, they match jobs or careers that fit your personality, so it's
This year, after I gave my presentation, Mrs. Malacher is like, "I'm just exhausted." And it's pretty much the same way. This year is exciting for me because we were in a year of transition last year. I'm trying to figure out what direction the board was going to go and how we were going to change things up by approaching corporate sponsors, applying for grants, doing things we've never done before. And this year, it's my last year at Haddon. So this year, it's a different type of transition. It's getting everybody in sort of in place so that when I leave, they're not going to be sort of standing around saying, "Well, what do we do now?" And it's not that I'm high on myself that they can't survive without me. It's just there's no written history of how things work. So that's what this year will be about, is working with the parents.
They asked her to adopt a child.
To. Yeah. I will still be in the -- I'm a substitute, so I'll still be in the building through substituting. But basically, we just -- a lot of great things are planned this year. We hope to upgrade the sound system in the gym. We hope to continue to work on the library and just put those mission touches on it. And everything that we're doing, we're keeping the levy in mind and hoping that whatever we do to improve this year will obviously transition into new buildings and also just really sort of keep Haddon moving forward, which is our ultimate goal. We had a phenomenal year last year. We were able to do so much, and we're hoping that we can do the same this year. Thank you for your time. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Can we include our special reports?
Okay. That takes us to old business then. Does anyone have anything under old business?
Yes, I do. During our finance meeting that we had this month, we went over the finance report for the paid participation fees. I would like for Gary, if possible, if he could go over this with the entire board and the community to show that we're not only contributing 20%, but it's closer to 30%, 40%. And we've been fielding a lot of phone calls regarding this, and I think this would be something that the whole community needs to hear.
Okay. You know, this year, we are -- the board voted to keep the fees the same this year as last year, I think with the intention of making things simpler. But there was some unintended consequences of what happened to the support donations this year and what happens if participation changes drastically. And so before we could figure out where we're going, we had to figure out where we were at. So what I did for the finance committee was I put together the actual cost from last year, the 2015-2016 school year, just to kind of figure out where we're at. Because the fees, you know, are set based on the prior year. So 15, 16 fees are set on 14, 15's actual cost and maybe some adjustments for some changes that are coming up. So it's a little bit of lag. So when I put the cost calculations together, just looking at 9th through 12th grade sports, the total cost to the board, which includes your salaries for coaches, your payroll costs like retirement, allocating athletic director, transportation cost, and athletic trainer cost, the total cost of 9th through 12th sports was just over $425,000. So if you took 20% of that for the board contribution, that's about $85,000 towards 9th through 12th sports. The support groups gave us about $35,500 towards those, you know, from different amounts in different organizations. So then when you factor in how many participants we actually had, multiplied by the fee we charged, you kind of compare what we charged against what the fee should have been, and then whatever that difference is, is another contribution basically the board made. In all cases, you know, we charged less than the actual cost. So I figured out that, you know, the board's 20% contribution of $85,000 through 9th through 12th sports, the boosters gave us another $35,000, and basically the board ended up absorbing the cost of another $33,000. So on 9th through 12th sports, we're looking at about $115,000 is the board contribution. And then looking at 7th through 8th grade sports, the total cost of all sports is just over $90,000. So the board contribution will be about $18,000. Support groups gave us just shy of $6,000. So when we calculated everything out, the additional board contribution is another $3,000 on top of that. So in all in all, we're looking at about $130-some thousand dollars is what the board actually ended up contributing last year. So that was kind of like we went over that in detail, and I can provide those spreadsheets for the rest of the board if they want to review that, you know, and have any questions regarding that.
Thank you. So any other old business? New business? All right, we will. That takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. We have not had a meeting, but we were just talking about.
We were. I was talking about Mr. Boliatos and also Hugh Manos, the teachers can do their career in college program. And we would like to extend an invitation to anybody that would like to be on that Business Advisory, any local companies out there that would like to come in. We've had some of the same ones over and over again, and as much as we do appreciate their help, it would be nice to get a few more businesses that could participate as well. I'm hoping that Mr. Manos, he has reached out to some of these groups. He's networking, and we're trying to get some that we're going to be directly working with with our kids. So once we get that together, we aim to set up a meeting.
Sounds good. All right, that takes us to Mr. Miley, Curriculum and Programming and Boosters.
Okay, I'll start with the Booster Club. We had a meeting September 16th where all of the schools that were present, we talked about board recognition and treasures request. We've talked about levy updates, issue five. And then each of the buildings went through things that are going on. There's a lot of great things going on in every building. They're truly parent-student oriented. There's pizza bingos, there's book fairs, there's spirit days, there's restaurant nights, there's too many to mention. And similar to what we just heard about what was going on at Haddon in the first month, it's like that in every building. And we appreciate that, and that truly brings it back to a school-parent-student relationship that is growing daily, which is very nice. With regards to the Curriculum and Programming Committee, I was not able to attend, so Mr. Hack's going to give a short summary on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Miley. So we did have a Curriculum and Programs meeting, let's say, in the first week of September, and it was a very interesting conversation in that we talked about a lot of the different programs we have in place, and we have a lot of the emphasis clearly at people who are going through and learning skill sets in Auburn. And we also have a large group of people who are students who graduate and go on to college. We talked a little bit about the people who are not necessarily part of a trade curriculum and not necessarily going to college, and how we might have further conversations on how to help those kids make the transition from an education environment here at Riverside into the actual real world. And that's just one thing that personally I'm very interested in because we need to make sure we help all, the whole spectrum of kids that come through the school. Additionally, one thing that I was pretty excited about, and I can't remember the name of it, but we got some, bought into a program that helps people, helps students take basically a questionnaire, and it helps them identify areas of interest and expertise to help them and direct them towards what career fields they might pursue once they leave Riverside. And Mrs. Malacher, if you could expand upon that a little bit?
I could. It's called Naviance, is the program. And it's, we will be rolling it out to our students, hopefully within the next month or so. And it does have an interest inventory component where the kids that'll match jobs that are based on their interests, and also has an assessment for the kids. An assessment, I don't mean a test that they take and there's something attached to it. It's almost like a personality test. And this one, they're only allowed to take once through their whole high school career because the understanding is that these traits do not change, so they don't want you to take it while they're real young. But then they match with what personality traits you have. They match jobs or careers that fit your personality. So it's going to be very interesting to see if their interests are matching up with what their strengths and personality are. I'm very interested to see that. But it has the career component. It has a way for them to look up colleges that have those careers that they're matched with. It's where they can do all their college applications, write their essays, provide documents to send to colleges. But again, it also has the career component where maybe a trade school will be what you need, or here's what you can do to pursue a career right after graduation. So it's a very comprehensive program that will fit all of our students' needs, no matter what decision they're making after high school.
And I personally, I was very excited about that, and I think it will be helpful, again, to all the students here at Riverside. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Grassi, Finance and Audit?
Can I ask Mrs. Malacher a question?
Okay.
How will students be able to access that program?
We're going to teach them all in one fell swoop to log in. So we are currently planning how we're going to roll it out at each grade level, where that's going to happen. So they, I guess I'm not sure what you mean.
I don't know, I'm just curious. Like, are all of our high school students going to be able to utilize the program?
Yes, absolutely. Actually, we're going to do it all the way down through six. It's going to be six through 12th. We're going to establish, not only are we going to get them logged in, but they're going to have at least this first year, one specific activity at each grade level that they're going to complete through the program. Obviously, sixth graders are going to then build upon that and will grow the program. Seniors, we know for sure, we're going to do a senior survey with them. So they'll probably do more playing around this year than, you know what I mean, than having it be as much of a tool for them because they are in their twilight of their high school years. But we did, we've already decided, we can do a senior survey, we can find out what they're doing, we can go back and track them. And they keep access to this after they graduate from high school, so they can go back and use this program after they graduate. Finance?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, now it's your turn for Finance.
Right, so we had a Finance and Audit meeting on September 15th, and we discussed a number of things, one of which is that Mr. Kleko has been elected Vice President of OASBO Northeast Ohio, which is the Ohio Association of School Business Association. So that's really exciting. Congratulations on that. We went over some new financial reports that we are going to be receiving instead of the old financial reports that we have been receiving for years. They're, he's going to review those during your charter review report, so I'm not going to take your thunder from that. But they're, I personally think they're very, very helpful. They're much more consolidated and concise, and I think you'll enjoy reading them. Speak for them.
I'm sure.
Anyway. Then we also talked about the appropriations for this coming school year, which we are going to be approving today, so we discussed those. And we discussed a few other things. We did discuss the paid participation schedule that we just reviewed and that you are going to be looking at in the future for the next playing seasons that are coming up. So kind of got that under control as well. So we'll probably have an update on a number of those things at our next meeting also.
Yes.
So that's all I have. I don't have anything for legislating at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hack, Building and Grounds?
So we met in September as well. We talked a lot about the busy planning for the future and what different needs the buildings have, and started to stack them up. One area that we are going to focus on moving forward is really understanding the state of our roofs. We did several studies, particularly here at the campus and some of the other buildings, just to really understand the state of the roofs and what we need to do moving forward. So we're going to get into more detail in the next meeting, which I will chime in right now, is on October 13th at 5:00 p.m., and we'll get some more details on the roofs. We also went over the permanent improvement, five-year budget or five-year forecast, and we're at a very interesting time because we're transitioning from the old permanent improvement levy, which was, I think, 1.89.
1.89.
1.89. And then thanks to the support of the voters, we now have a permanent improvement levy that's a 2.5. And so we are transitioning from that current amount to the new amount, and we are looking to understand better which of the different priorities for the buildings we can prioritize and get into the hopper to actually come to fruition. So we're working through that, and it was a very good meeting. From a strategic planning liaison perspective, I don't have anything to report.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Jeffries, Personnel and Alumni?
Personnel, we had a meeting on September 15th. We discussed the administrative contracts that are expiring in July of 2017, and those current employees that are up for renewal. We also then did a general review of the administrative handbook and review of the IT department and its language. How has the IT department been working with us so far?
Having, you know, having them come in in April, there were a few obstacles. But with that being said, we haven't had many issues. They deployed quite a bit of Chromebooks in the beginning of the year. They do business a little bit differently in terms of their tend to, you know, fix computers. They have another area down in the media center which allows them a little bit more room to store equipment and repair equipment. Melissa's been working with them pretty closely, too. I haven't heard a lot from my desk, you know, in terms of problems.
None of this is good news.
None of this, yeah. That's good. Okay, continuing on, we reviewed the teachers that are requesting continuing contracts. And last, we discussed general office responsibilities, EEOC reporting, ESSA, and federal guidelines. That's it from there. And then Alumni Association, Alumni Association, they've been very busy in the past couple of months. They had their annual duck race fundraiser, which was September the 10th, and I believe somebody from the board office won.
Yeah, Donna.
Oh, sure. I didn't know that.
Yes. So she won. And September 17th, we had the Hall of Fame induction ceremony. We had four individuals inducted into the Alumni Association Hall of Fame. And during the same week, we had George Ensco's ceremony, which is now the boardroom here.
That's true.
Take a look at it. I would also like to thank Dan, Mr. Weiner, for doing an excellent job in getting this room the way it is. I'd like to say that you did an excellent job on this, and congratulations.
Thank you, and I want to thank everybody that helped with this project. I had a lot of people walking in every day and giving me suggestions. So each and everyone, thank you very much.
We do know that the paint smell is gone now, so we all could drive home. Thank you.
Well, this is wonderful. Huge change.
A lot of people, maintenance, some outside people, and a lot of help for color matching inside because I'm not a fashion statement.
No, it looks good. It really does. And the beaver in the back really stands out pretty good, too.
I especially like all the pictures. I know, it makes me crazy.
And if anybody didn't see the plaque, the plaque is on the back corner. It's a great-looking plaque. And that is all I have.
Excellent, thank you. All right, that takes us to Mr. Kelo, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I get started, I wanted to turn it over to Melissa Malacher. There was a question about books and College Credit Plus. I apologize for the brevity to answer you because we didn't know the answer to your question, so we researched it, and Melissa has an answer for you.
Got some answers. So Mrs. Grassi had asked about the payment that we make to Lakeland. And currently, on the agenda tonight, I believe there's money that's being paid to Lakeland for our textbooks from Lakeland. So first thing you need to know is that per Ohio Revised Code, we are obligated to pay for the textbooks for kids who are in College Credit Plus. So that's the first step. The second part of that is we do indeed rent the textbooks. Based on the agreement that we have with Lakeland, we are charged $35 per credit hour that a student takes. So for every, now, that is not students here, it is students only that go to Lakeland. So our students who attend CCP classes here, because we bought the books here, we own them at Riverside. But if they take classes at Lakeland, we pay $35 per hour. The way it works is they go to the bookstore, they take their schedule, they gather up their books, they have to go through a line where it is checked to match their schedule to make sure that they only have books that are required by the classes that they take. And then they go through the line, they get rung up, and we get billed that $35 per hour. It does not matter what books they buy or how much those books cost. So there was no report that could be pulled from. However, because I suspected there was going to be some interest in what would the comparison be, Momo and I due diligently spent some time this afternoon looking up every course we think a child takes at Lakeland that our kids currently are enrolled in, and we are roughly saving, if I have to guess, and it's just an estimate because I'm not going to lie, when I pulled up Intro to Business and there were 14 sections, we just clicked on one and took the book that was required for that particular section. So we are roughly saving about $15,000 doing it in this way. Now, the flip side of that is we have nothing left to turn in. You know what I mean? So if we have the books, here's the thing, I don't know if the time that we would expend managing that, if it's even possible, to do it in that way. It's certainly something to consider, but that's about where we are as compared to renting. Now Lakeland does, if they don't turn the books back in, the kids do get charged.
Yeah, I got my receipt. They give you a receipt.
Well, there you go. So they do get charged. Interestingly enough, there is new legislation, two pieces that I think potentially down the road could benefit us. One is if you pay, the entity that pays for the books gets to own them. So currently, that is not in law. And secondly, another part of the proposed legislation is that if we offer the course here, the kids will not be allowed to take it at Lakeland because that's an interesting concept. We have several kids that are taking the comp class that we offer or the Western Soup class that we offer, probably because they're seniors and they want to be at Lakeland all day is what I suspect is the reason behind it. But the reality is, is it costs us money because we have to pay to run those books. They aren't getting our books here. We're paying $105 essentially a class for them to run their books over there. So that, if that would pass, that would help to save us some money on the overall cost.
But you might have to add a section or two.
Potentially. I think that's, it may work itself out, it may not. We have the room to add a couple of sections because we reduced in the area of English, but potentially, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting when the concept, when I saw that on the agenda, seeing as how we do, we rent the textbooks, but then we don't get the textbooks.
Well, that's because we're just renting them.
Right. But I mean, you know, but we can keep renting them time after time. Kids are going to keep taking that. It would, sometimes you would think, well, wouldn't it just be cheaper if we bought the books? If we kept the books, somebody else could have it or use it or whatever. But it was, it was just a question.
No, it was. And that's, so that's why I, I mean, I followed up as thoroughly as I thought I could to answer, to finish answering the question, so.
Thank you. Thanks.
So for the last two years or so, we've been trying to find a sponsor, a healthcare provider sponsor for Riverside local schools. Talked to a lot of hospitals in this area, and we thought we had one with Lake Health a few years ago, where they were going to offer us $180,000 if we established a clinic at our Riverside campus. And we don't have a lot of space for it, we would have to staff it. It didn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to us at the time. So we kind of shopped around, and we found ourselves, again, back with Lake Health, and the sponsorship was negotiated in a different manner. And we're very happy to announce to the board that we have found a sponsorship with Lake Health and with minimal responsibilities for obligations for our schools at little cost. So what I decided to do is put up the sponsorship on the screen here and go through it and tell the board that just for doing a few things like having a logo on the football field, a Lake Health logo, having a banner in the fieldhouse that's purchased by Lake Health, having a banner on the outfield on our varsity softball and baseball fields, and having the ability to have some type of banner with Lake Health and Riverside local schools on it to use in media areas in the high school athletic program. Lake Health will also provide training services for 10 years for our student-athlete grade, 7th through 12th, at no cost to the district. For us, it's a savings of $5,844. It's not really for us, but it is for the students because that cost, we went to pay to participate, was put on the paid participation cost. So we're going to have, they're going to see a reduction of another $5,844 for the students. In exchange for all of this, Riverside will receive $230,000 to use on our academic and athletic capital projects. And right now, there's some talk about using it, almost a third of it here. The $230,000 is about a third of what it costs to find, to install artificial turf on the football field. And some people may ask, "Why do you want to spend $230,000?" Well, the $230,000 would offset the cost for artificial turf. Also, there is a very good possibility that we may have a cell tower also located in the corner of our property that will also help to pay for it. And it will give us the ability to have all of our groups, not only school-sponsored sports, but those sports, youth programs, to use our field and bring out the community together to use that facility. Now, the process that we're in right now is we're getting together with a couple of coaches, also with Gary, and we're kind of shopping around in terms of what the cost might be to install this. We believe that through a small portion of our PI levy and also this amount along with the cell tower, we can get it done and finance it over a year period. So we're still in the discussions about it. Obviously, we're going to have some of our work sessions where we're going to have more information for the board. But again, we spent a lot of money maintaining the natural turf with the paints, man hours, watering it, fertilizing it, and we'll show you the data on that at a later board meeting to show you that this is probably the way we need to go. We also allow all levels, not just varsity levels, but all levels of our sports, football, soccer, the youth football programs, soccer programs, anything that we can do, lacrosse club team, to get them out on the field. And it would just be an issue of scheduling than an issue of maintenance.
Right. It's almost doubles the capacity of the field.
Absolutely does. Okay. Also, there was some discussion a couple of years ago when we decided to leave the pack and form a new athletic conference, it's a Western Reserve Conference. What I decided to do is show the board and the community how well we did in this league. Now, this is from last year, so we've only been in the league for one year. I have to explain this points earned. It's typically a ranking of one through eight, and if you're first place, you get eight points. If you're second place, you get seven points. You can see here that we only count the sports that are available to the students in our district. In other words, Riverside doesn't have a bowling team, and we don't have a tennis team. Tennis was one of the only sports that we had that fell by the wayside when we had paid to participate. It was awfully high, there were a few participants, and it was pretty much cost prohibitive. But as you can see, most of the districts have about the same number of sports as well. Now, if you go to the next one, Voice Championships, this is for fall, winter, and spring. There were a few that didn't have any championships. We came close in a couple of areas, and I'll show you in just a minute. But the one that had the most was Kenston, which happens to be the smallest district, which is surprising, has the smallest high school as well. This is the overall rank for the boys. First place was Kenston, second was Mayfield, third, South, fourth, Chardon, fifth, Madison, sixth, Riverside, seventh, Brush, and eighth would be North. For the girls, same thing, points earned. You can see the sports that we offer as opposed to some of the others. Again, no girls tennis team, no bowling. We have gymnastics as a club sport where a coach comes in and works with kids that might be very good at that sport, and then they can participate in the state tournament. In fact, on our agenda today, we do have In fact, on our agenda today, we do have a volunteer tennis coach that will be working with one of our tennis players here, just for that reason. Brush was first, or no, I'm sorry, this is the championships. Brush had one championship, Chardon had four, Mayfield three, Kenston two, and Madison one. Maybe go to the next slide, Chuck. You're going to find that Kenston was number one in the girl sports in the WRC, and Riverside happened to be fourth out of the eight teams. So we're hanging in there. I put this up here, and I also have it in hard copy, unfortunately, it's a little blurry in the report. But I just wanted the board to see that now that we settled down, we've been in school for a month, that these are, as of September 22nd, these are the number of students in each of our classes. It's pretty well balanced. I have to say that, give credit to Mr. Schlick, he did a lot of work on this in the summer, trying to balance out some classes. We do have open enrollment as well, taking some students and putting them in places where we have some space. But as you look, it looks a lot better than what it did last year, especially in the Hail Road and the latter grades. They're all real manageable, number of students in each of the classrooms. As Mr. Jeffrey said, we had a Hall of Fame, Mr. Half was there with me. We have three people here, Terry Hamilton, class of 1979. He's a real estate, successful real estate agent, and he also actually is a recording artist. I believe he's a country and gospel recording artist. And he was also, he gave a pretty moving speech about his battle with cancer that he overcame, and a very gentle gentleman, and it was really nice to hear him speak. We also have Matt Domann, who's on the right. He was a, he was inducted because of his athletic prowess. And he is, he went to Mount Union, I think he was second to Allstate while I was here at the high school. And I believe he was a national champion at Mount Union as well, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And also, a teacher in our district, Carol Lewis, taught home ec, consumer, family consumer science for 20 years. And she impacted a lot of people as well. She had quite a sense of humor while she was giving the speech as well. Also during the Hall of Fame induction, we also, go to the next slide, we wanted to give tribute to George Insco, who had served our district for 38 years. And what's interesting about it is, I don't think he stopped at 38. He keeps on working for our district, and not in terms of an employee, but as a cheerleader, a person that has always supported our schools. He's always around. He's going to be 95, I think, in a couple of days. I think October 1st is his birthday. This man still drives, comes to the central office to get yearbooks, so he can go through some of the names. I'm talking back like 1961, looking, because sometimes he attends the reunions. And he knows everybody. So what a fitting tribute would be to name this conference room after him. And again, thanks to the maintenance department, we didn't have a lot of time putting some things together, but we transformed it. He came down with his family, and he was so moved, he sent, he called me up the other day to thank the board and the administration for such the honor. And I tried to explain to him, if he may think it was a blessing, it was a blessing that he is in Riverside's life.
Yeah. If I could just try me again, I was at the Hall of Fame induction ceremony as well, and got to hear him speak. I really had no exposure to Mr. Insco prior to this, but it is, a couple of times I've been very fortunate to be around somebody in their 90s who is cognizant and conscious as they were when they were 20. And Mr. Insco is that way, and it's just amazing to have that kind of history at your fingertips. And the other thing that was really striking about him is, he was very funny. He has a terrific sense of humor, and just thoroughly enjoyed his being here.
He said that working in the district was the second biggest job, most rewarding job. His first was, he was a sorority boy for a local sorority when he was in college. He was like a houseboy, collecting sorority.
It was a very tough job, I understand.
Can we get that picture, like, put up by his stuff, his family picture maybe?
What's that?
Can we get his family picture put up by his?
Sure, we can do that. Yeah. Okay, facilities update. This is the property owned by Osborn, as the board knows, Concord Handen Road and also Ravenna Road. There's a lot of things that have been going on since our last board meeting, last work session, I think it was two weeks ago. Go ahead, Chuck. The wetland delineation timeline, HZW Environmental Consultants were on site today, and they were doing some studies on that area. They believe that they can have a map outlining wetlands area by the end of this week and have the whole report done by, during the week of October 3rd. So that will be done. Also, we met with the owner of the property on Monday, September 26th, it was Mrs. Hardin and myself. The price is down from the original asking price when it was out, about a couple of years back, I think they've had the property for a while. This particular owner is willing to work with the district, but many variables may impact the price. And while we were talking, there were some things that we have to do in terms of our own homework with the environmental studies. He's not the only one that determines whether or not he sells the property for a given price. He has to work with some of his family members as well. There were some also, there was some discussion also about the possibility of maybe a partial land swap if the levy passes. And when it passes, we're going to be taking down a few schools and selling some property. He might be interested in looking to see what to have, might be worth. He's going to stop in on Friday, we're going to take him around. Also, Fanny and Howie had the Osborn engineer visit the site, actually today in the afternoon. I have not talked to them because it was in the PM. They also told me that we need to get soil boring done as well. So instead of going through Kramer Coos Company, I'm just going to go straight to the soil people and order that done. Now, the things to consider, in discussions with Fanny and Howie, there are a lot of advantages to that site, but there's some disadvantages as well. The advantage is, is we have sewer access. We didn't have that with any other property that we looked at. Even the Concord Close property that was east of 608 and Girdle did not have sewer access. It doesn't even have sewer capacity. And even if it did, to run sewer to that location would cost millions of dollars according to the sewer district. So when we put the bond together, we can save on the cost of a wastewater treatment plant. It's near a crossroads of Ravenna and Concord Handen, so you can get to the place from north and south and east and west on some major roads. We have a motivated seller, at least I believe, and the seller's motivated. There's a possibility of a land swap, we didn't have that with the other property. We're really considering holding the property until the passage of levy. And this, these two things are, could be advantages or disadvantages. But this is one thing I don't think the board knows. In talking with Fanny and Howie, and in talking to their engineers, and also Charles Ripley Company, the original wetland study that was done in the early 2000s, there's only about 0.48 acres of wetland. The estimate to mitigate it was around $160,000. So the board, we could consider taking out the wetland on that property so long as we replace it somewhere else. So if we're talking about the slope, if it tails off at the end, there is a possibility that they could move the earthwork and not be as significant as what it was once we originally thought it was, where we'd have to bring dirt in and move it around. So this might be a possibility, we need to check into that a little bit more. And there's also a gas well on it, where we can tap into that as well and maybe heat part of that building. While the disadvantage is, it's topography, slopes quite a bit, it will not keep the architects from putting something together, we can go on anything they said. But it's somewhat limited to the form and function of the building type and style. For instance, you can have the front of the building, only the first floors, and the back of the building could be two floors. But when you build an elementary school, it's code that you have to have windows in the classrooms. So if you think about something that stretches east-west, only the back side of that building would have windows, which means it would limit us to classrooms on the south side of that building. But it doesn't mean we can't build it in a U-shaped. But that's what I mean, there's some things that we're going to have to figure out in terms of what the form and function would be. There's also recommended that we pursue more frontage space, which might be that we talk to a neighbor that owns a corner lot there. I did put a call into Concord trustees to see if I can get the name and the number of the person that lives there. And also, we need to schedule the water samples, like I said before. The gas well, the architect is concerned about whether or not the soil has been contaminated. But that's just protocol, so we're going to get that site. I don't think it is, but maybe it was a gas well or an oil well originally, we're looking at some of the maps. Also, Madison Avenue, I talked to Dan McIntyre today. We're going to put together a contingency to send the Sid Coe Company to purchase the property when the levy passes. The property right here is another three acres. Believe it or not, Madison Avenue, we have a wastewater treatment plant on there because they cannot tie in the sewer there. In order to do so, it'd be nice to have another three acres so we can have to shift some things back. The back end of Madison is used quite a bit with our youth sports programs, our soccer programs, the Lake County Storm uses it quite a bit. And it's, I came by hearing how great of a field it is back there because it absorbs a lot of water. Selling price would be $100,000. That would give us a recommended 16 acres, right now we have slightly over 13. And upcoming events, we have the Homecoming Parade this Thursday, football game, Homecoming Dance. One thing I wanted to point out, on October 5th, there's a Candidates of Issue Form that's hosted by the Concord Trustees and sponsored by the Concord League of Women Voters. Mrs. Hardin and I are going to go, and I think you might be in the audience, just to fill us some financial questions, you can be there. We only have a few minutes to explain our levy, and we want to take advantage of it if we can. We've also been doing a lot of the coffees lately, we went to the Riverhawks. We did three coffees this past week, and there's some more that we need to schedule and get those done.
Yeah, Mrs. Grassi and I also went to the Eastern Lake County Chamber Meeting the other day that had the issue and candidate form as well.
Also, Manufacturing Expo in the Perry High School. We hosted it last year, it was a great event. So if you want to attend that, it's October 6th on a Thursday, and it's from 4 to 7 for the general public. The other thing I want to do is say hi to Melissa DeAngelis, she left. She was administrator of DeAngelis City, she was sitting in the back, I just wanted to say hi to her. She's doing some work for a class. And the other thing I wanted to say, and I kept on smiling actually, is the fact that, and she said that the hat's not going to miss her, that's a lie. She's amazing.
She is.
The appraisal will be done in about two weeks. So everything should be done in the next week, appraisal two weeks.
Excellent. All right.
Another thing, Mrs. Hardin, everyone I'm sure saw in the newspaper that the error test results are out, and I have a breakdown by district and Lake County schools. I want to pass it out, I want you to take a look at it. In October, we're going to give a formal presentation. There's a couple of in-services that we're going to go to so that some of the experts can explain to us how they got to some of these scores.
Also, upcoming events, we do need to, as a board, make sure that we schedule our next work session for two weeks from now, just to continue the conversations we've been having about the facility plan, and then also the goal setting that we had intended to do this year for the district. So we need to make sure before we go today that we get that done as well.
Mr. Lock, did you turn on the lights?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Sorry. It went the wrong way.
Mr. Kales, we were going through this, or we're good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Then that takes us to the treasurer's report, Mr. Pleco.
Okay. On tonight's agenda, Exhibit D is our permanent appropriations for the year, for this fiscal year. Basically, it's our set budget for the year. Back in June, you guys passed a temporary appropriation, which allows us to spend money this year. And then, yeah, it gives us time to more hone in the correct numbers and more accurate numbers based on things that change, especially we have the contract assignment, the energy and things like that, a lot of unknowns. So we went through all the accounts. We, appropriations are based on fund level, so you just, the board just approves a total budget for each fund for the year. We went over this on the Finance Committee meeting. There was a bit of small change in the PI fund, and I think that was not anything we changed from the Finance Committee meeting. Basically, you know, obviously we budget much more detail than this, but this is all required to vote through. The next thing I wanted to go over, Belinda had mentioned, I'm going to start putting out our financial report for each month that we can go over. In the past, you know, Sally and my staff would email a bunch of system-generated reports to you guys to review, and they're not very user-friendly, and they're hard to read, and it's a lot of detail. So I thought it was a good idea to put a nice financial report together, walk you through it real quick here today. Belinda and Steve will help me through it at the Finance Committee agenda meeting. My goal is to, this is going to replace all the reports that we normally send, except for the, we still get the check register each month, and then get the financial report to review. And then after we approve it each month, posting it on the treasurer's page on the website. And then there's, we're also on the Ohio Checkbook, so I'm going to put a link on there to have people go on the Ohio Checkbook and look at whatever detail they want to look at. So just to go through the report real quick, Table 1 on Page 2, is our regular bank account reconciliation. We're working on cleaning up some of these accounts, we have some outstanding, some accounts that have kind of been lingering around for a while, so we're looking to zero those out, close out any unused accounts, and just kind of consolidate things going forward and making managing our funds a little easier. Table 2 on Page 3, this shows all of our fund balances for all the individual funds. So you'll see, there's columns for your month-to-date receipts, year-to-date receipts, and then our current cash balance on the third, last column. And then it shows what we have encumbered, outstanding purchases we have, and then our final unencumbered fund balance there. Typically, you like to see positives. Towards the bottom, the grant funds that start with 500, typically they're on a reimbursement basis, so those ones are always typically negative. And then, you know, the PI levy is currently negative because we have a lot of finance payments due, but we're getting our next settlement in February that's going to wind up in positive at the end of the year, but right now we're negative. So sometimes you'll see negatives there, that sometimes they're alarming, sometimes they're not. And as of right now, there's nothing here that they're really be majorly concerned about. The joint financing district's also negative, we need to tweak what salaries were charged in there, and we're going to work on that. Typically, I guess towards the end of the year, we take some people off of our general fund, just to kind of respend for zero, and the rest of those goes to the general fund. The next page, on Table 3, Page 4, this is our appropriation summary. So this is looking at, these are our amounts that we budgeted for the year, what we had encumbered prior year that carried over, I think it's our expendable amount, how much have we expended so far, how much in purchase orders we have outstanding, and then our ending remaining balance. Those ones should always be positive. If we're negative, that means we overspend our budget, and we're not supposed to do that. So this helps us make sure that we're compliant with the Ohio Vice Code and make sure there's no issues that we need to address. The next table, Table 4, this one's a little harder to read. There's basically two boxes. The first set of boxes compares August of last year to August of this year. And the second set of boxes compares fiscal year-to-date through August from last year and fiscal year-to-date through August for this year. And it's broken out by the five-year forecast lines. So this one, you can kind of look at, if you're looking at August to August, you see what your variances are. And just for example, in line 1.01, property tax, there's a huge variance of 3.8 million. And that's simply because our final tax settlement came in September instead of August, so that's why you see that variance. Next month, you'll see it flipped, but the year-to-date next month will probably be about equal. So that's kind of, you know, helps you compare year to year and see if there's any drastic changes or, you know, something that, you know, sets off the alarm, what's going on with this. So it's just, and it's a good way to kind of track our progress with the five-year forecast as well, kind of just to see spending compared to last year and this year and how we're The next page, Table 5, on Page 6, this is a breakout of just the general fund, the general- The general fund's our biggest fund and where most of our operations run through. And this shows all of our revenue lines that we have, so you can kind of keep track of, you know, where we're at. If someone, you know, wanted to see like how much donations we got, or money from field trips, or participate, or things like that, you can find it on here, and you can see where there is, you know, what we get from the State Foundation, our property tax amounts. So we have our, it shows us an estimated of what we're estimating to bring in, and then what we've actually brought in, year-to-date. And also, at the top, there's a nice percentage, you know, we're two months through the year, so that's 16.67% through the year. You can kind of compare it to how much revenue we collect compared to our budget. We should be around the same amount, and, you know, if there's any major variance, that can help identify a problem there is. And then table six, which is pages seven through 10, this is a breakout of the general fund expenditures. So we could see, you know, where are we spending on salaries? Where are we spending on regular certificated teachers? Where are we spending on overtime and things like that? Retirement, you know, supplies, and this is a whole laundry list of all the items that we have on here. So it's a good way to kind of see what we budgeted, where we're in our spending, and, you know. And if anybody has any questions, we can always look at things in more detail if they need to. So my goal is to, you know, put this on the website. That way, you know, over time, we'll have a nice collection up there that anybody can go on. Is there any questions on the financial report, or the comments?
I appreciate that it's so user-friendly.
And then one other thing I just wanted to bring up, as I'm getting ready to prepare the five-year forecast, we're going to the seminar this Thursday and Friday, was just to talk about the joint financing district real quick. Typically, in the past, we've included the joint financing district with our general fund on our forecast. None of the other joint financing district members do that. We also don't do that for our annual report. They're broken out separately. And by combining them together, it makes it a little more challenging to tie back to the numbers that are in our system. So I was going to propose taking the financing district out of the forecast, because typically it's a wash. We get about 2.2 million in revenue, and they go towards salaries in, you know, the four different areas that, so it kind of washes itself out as a zero balance in the end. But taking it out of the forecast is basically to lower our revenue and our expenditure numbers, but it doesn't, to me, in my mind, doesn't change the forecast much at all, but it makes it easier to tie out to our system and make it easier to project things. So I don't know if anybody had any objections to that, or even in favor of keeping it the way it is. You know, obviously, we'll document it, if we do make the change, we'll document the assumptions that we made a change, and just adjust the prior numbers.
And I would defer to you on something like that. I wouldn't.
Yep.
If that's what your suggestion is, I would, I'm completely fine with that.
The only question I have on that is that when we take the joint financing revenue off of our five-year forecast, and then we take the corresponding salaries and benefits off of it, it's just salaries. We take that off. It leaves, I don't want to say transparency, because that's not really the word I'm looking for. It doesn't give the public the impact of what happens when we lose that fund.
Right. And that, we would know, you know, I think the financing district is through 2020 right now, the levy. So, you know, if there was, if there were talks of that not being renewed, that's when it'll affect the five-year forecast, because then that impact would hit it.
It's just hard, I guess, just for me, I just think, you know, you look at a salary line, and that's what people think your salaries are, but really it's not what your salaries are. Your salaries are 2.2 million dollars more than that, but people don't see that. And so that's just one of the, I think that's the reason why it eventually went on to the five-year forecast. I'm not saying if it's a good idea or a bad idea. I just, that's just my concern.
And with these financial reports too, you will see, you know, each month, we'll see our financing district listed on here too, so that's also a way that we can monitor that as well. But, you know, I'm open, you know, if the board prefers to keep it the way it is, we can keep the way it is, it's just, you know.
Because eventually, that will come out of the expenditures on this, on these reports also.
Right. It will be on the reports that show all the different funds. Right.
It won't be, right?
Right. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
I really like these reports. Thank you for that.
Yeah, they're wonderful. All right. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves, and their topic comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have any comments today? Any questions?
My name is Willie Shergren. I was just asking the update on the busing situation. If there's any, I just, just sort of seeing all my, I had kids from second grade to 11th grade. Just sort of wondering, I know you guys got all different, you guys are doing a good job. Everybody's great. You know what I mean? Just sort of wondering what. I got a, you have a seven-year-old kid. What's going on from like next year? She could be walking. So I'm just sort of wanting to update, or any hope, or maybe you're saying what's going on kind of thing? I don't know, and I know you guys might know. Is there any, I mean, is there like a glimmer of hope, or a sprig?
I think, if I can speak.
You don't say I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time. I'm just wondering if it's chaos every day.
Earlier, well, it was last year, we looked at three different options and tried to bring back transportation as much as we could with the limited funds that we have. And there was one point where it would cost about $300,000 plus the purchase of about four buses that would cost about $90,000 apiece. It's costly for us right now. Now, we have a bond up this November.
Yes.
For the two buildings. There has been some discussion in some of our coffees, and also at this table, and it's no secret that in a couple of years, we're going to need some money to operate. Our last new money levy was in 2004. And let me know if I'm speaking out of line, but I doubt very much if we would not have an operating levy up next year sometime.
Yeah.
Either in May or November of 2017. The board has talked about some of the priorities and some of the things that they would like to do if we were to get those additional operating dollars. And I hear over and over again that programming is paramount. We cut a lot of things at the elementary schools, some of the arts. We would like to bring that back.
Yes.
Also, we would like to be able to bring back at least busing in some form. I'm not sure if it's everything that we had back then, but that's another priority. Pay to participate was another priority. You have to understand though, too, and what we've been explaining at these coffees in terms of the bond, is the bond's going to, if it passes in November, it would allow us to be more efficient in how we deliver our instruction and maintenance in our buildings. We'll be building two elementary schools and taking down four. And there's an economy of scale there. There's going to be the ability to reduce by some personnel as well. When you have schools that have 200 enrolled kids in them, it's not very efficient. When you combine, you have 600 or so. It gives us the ability to be more efficient. The PI levy that we have allows us to fix buildings, fix roofs. We've spent a lot of money on these old buildings. Two new buildings would allow us to spend less money on those things and more on instructional things in the class. So what we would like to see is being able to pass a small bond this November, be able to look down into the future where we're going to be able to take down four buildings, put up an operating levy, not a huge one, but one that's going to be able to get us through, and would allow us to bring back some of the things that we cut between 2010 and 2012. What we've been saying is those two levies in itself would turn this place around, turn this district around. We have new facilities, not 80, 90-year-old buildings, and we would have the money to operate the way we would like to operate, like other schools.
They're not efficient, built, run, and they were building. Is there any other schools in the Northeast in Ohio that doesn't have buses?
Yeah, I think there are some, yes.
I mean, I'm curious, Lake County?
I'm not, I'm not sure about Lake County. I know, I think Wesley doesn't provide basic busing, last I heard.
Shaker, Lakewood.
Shaker, Lakewood doesn't, Lakewood's small though. It's not like.
And I understand, I understand the money and the economy. I get all that. I understand where you guys are coming from. There's only so much cuts in the pie. But it's sort of a concern, because like I said, I mean, you can see we just walked out of here. So that means for, I mean, I'm just wondering, is it actually in, you know, are we even, is this even a discussion anymore, or?
It is.
It is. So we're hoping once we pass this levy this year, hopefully down in the future, that we might be able to get ourselves back on top of the horse.
It would be great to be able to pass this bond and become more efficient with our buildings, put up an operating levy. I tell you what, we don't like getting the calls. We understand. The only problem is, we just don't have the money to operate the way we would like to operate. We run very lean here.
Yes.
This would give us an opportunity of passage of an operating levy next year to bring some of these things back. And again, it's been a priority, top three priority, I would say, in the discussions that we've had over the last year or so.
The busing is top three?
I'd say so.
That's great.
Not three years, right?
No, that's, that's good. I'm just sort of getting a status report. I just want to know what the future brings, you mean?
It's no surprise.
It's super danger. I mean, like I said, you see these kids running across 84. I mean, it's just. That's enough sad. I don't want to get into, I just wanted to, I just wanted to know what's going on in the future. Basically, are we even, do we even have a hope? You know what I mean? Do they have buses again, or is it completely, no? But you're saying it's one of your three top priorities?
I would say so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's fair enough. I mean, I've been saying, just sort of wondering what's going on. It's getting to report. It's just starting to get a little aggravating. I mean, it's hard to break that time from about 7:30 in the morning. You couldn't get to work till eight, which doesn't permit for anybody here. And then to pick your kid up at 2:30, you get to leave work at 1:30, so you can get five hours of work a day. So, and again, I understand the economy and your funding, and it's just a little rough on families to, 1,200 families, the way I understood last time, she told me there's about 1,200, 1,200 students that are affected by this, correct? Roughly.
Yeah, I'd have to look.
Roughly. I mean, 1,100, 1,200 kids are affected, the ninth grade to 12th grade. Is that an accurate number?
I would have to look at my.
Yeah, somewhere in there?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. That's good enough. I don't want to take up your guys'. And thank you for your information.
Thank you. Did you have a question as well?
Yes. My name is Anna Lee. I just had a question regarding pay to participate. It might be to Gary. Do we know yet?
We do have some confusion on what we actually approved back in June, because it seemed that we had kind of different interpretations of what that is. And we've been working through what the costs were for last year, and, you know, I think that when we, when they set, when I wasn't here when the fees were set, I think that caused unintended consequences for this year that wasn't foreseen. And we've been having those discussions, and we're close to a resolution, but we're just not.
The problem then was the, we discussed about setting the pay to participation fees at the same level it was last year, but it's after the fundraising. See, so after, it wasn't Gary, but after we posted it online, this is the amount before, you know, receiving some of the funds. So now the, there's a discussion of whether or not the board eats the difference. You know, and this is after they already put in 20% in a very tight budget. The, you know, it goes to, like, even golf. A lot of times, you know, it'll be close to $1,000 to pay to participate, because it's not a big team. And they have greens fees. It gets very expensive. But they do a golf outing, and they bring it down to basically zero. So I can't have golf, the pay to participate be set on the previous year, because every year it'd be zero, no matter if they continued to do their fundraising.
Well, that's what happened with volleyball, because I'm president of Hooster Club, and the fees run from last year after we gave our donation from the golf outing. So that was approved. Then we gave our chart for this year, and it brought our fees down to like 95 and 42 for seventh through eighth grade. But, I mean, the parents are just hounding us right now because our season's ending. So I'm just hoping to get an answer to send them back. I mean.
I think some of the frustration, not only are the high pay to participation fees and having the distraction of having to fundraise, but it's the amount moving all around. And that was the reason why we had the discussion about setting it and being done with it. Because if you have a team and you set the amount, if someone gets hurt and gets their money back, or someone quits, you know, early enough to get their money back, and then we're going back to the parents and, oh, by the way, even though you thought you already paid for your pay to participate, you have to pay another $30 to make up the difference. We want to get away from that, because it's just, it's too much of a clerical work, and the parents don't like when it happens, right? When they think that they're paying, they're hitting them up for another 30 to 50 bucks. So what we would like to do is set that amount, and then after that, it stays there. This is after fundraising. We set a time that all the fundraisings do. We set the amount, and we leave it alone. Then there's discussion about, if there's a couple of people that fall off, or a couple of people, a couple more kids that join on, just leave it the way it is. We take care of the difference. If it happens to be a significant amount that drops off, or a significant amount that adds on, like maybe a percentage, 10%, maybe that's what we have to talk about, and that's when we adjust it.
I think we talked about, talking about this at our next finance meeting, which we actually have scheduled for the 17th of October. I know that's kind of a while from now, but we do have it on our.
He's on the website, and we keep telling the parents, don't pay anything until a year. And so I just want to make sure, because like I said, our season's coming to an end. And I just, we just got another email from parents. I'm like, well, I'm going to the board, and I'll find out.
So, and I also think that the finance committee would like to have that conversation with the board at our next work session also. So, fair enough? Thank you.
Thank you.
One more question.
Yes.
Who, who actually pays for the ship, the deputies that sit out here in the morning and at the day, at the end of the day, that direct all the traffic to get in and out of here?
We, when it originally started, it was through a grant.
Okay.
And that was back in 99, I think it was after Columbine, actually.
Okay.
And slowly but surely, after a few years, we assumed the cost of the deputies at the door.
To direct that traffic. What does that cost them?
I think, last I checked, I think it was like $21 an hour, somewhere in that.
I mean, in a yearly, what would you, what would you pay for the? I knew you knew all the answers last night. You got all the numbers. Or was, I thought somebody, who, what's, hundreds of thousands, I mean, how many?
Would be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay. We were just curious, like, is the Sheriff's Department actually paying for that? Are the schools actually paying for it? So you guys, they're actually paying for those people?
Yes.
And the parents are actually coming, so it's a whole, okay, I got it. I got you. I was just wondering who was actually paying the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. It takes us to the consent agenda. A consent agenda provides for a more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. Finance and audit.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on finance and audit consent agenda items as recommended by the treasurer, items A through B. Just a second.
A second.
There are a lot of items. Do we have any discussion on any of the items in here?
I have a question. Does any of these items allow or set an amount that we can spend without bidding out a job?
No. That's set by Ohio law. There's anything under, over $25,000 for any type of construction that has to be bid out unless they're on the no-bid list with Ohio Schools Council. There's ways that we don't have to bid every project that we do, but that, we have no control. That's set by Ohio law.
Okay. So none of these are setting a ceiling or a limit or anything?
Anything else?
If there's no other discussion, can we call it over?
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel?
Motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by Superintendent, items A through G. Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussions? Okay, can call the room, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Stephen Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Mally?
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming?
Motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through D. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussions?
Yes, I have a question on item D, which is our waiver for the career tech. We requested a waiver last year as well. How many years do we get a waiver?
You can do it every year.
Okay.
Hopefully, this will be our last year. We did talk about that in the, in the curriculum and programming meeting, that this would be coming up. Hopefully, it will be our last year, we've already put some things into place to change it for next year.
Any other discussions, questions? Okay. Gary, if you can call the roll?
Steven Jeffries.
Hi.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Belinda Grassi.
Hi.
Tom Heck.
Hi.
Motion carried. Billings and grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the billions and grounds slash operational consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, item A. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Miley? Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Belinda Grassi.
Hi.
Tom Heck.
Hi.
Steven Jeffries.
Hi.
Motion carried. Okay, before we adjourn, if we could just quickly, we do need to get a work session on the agenda. Probably for somewhere in the next two weeks again. Knows their schedules, we're looking at it possibly the week I'd say of October 10th, to begin another update on land. And also too, like I said, we had, everyone sent me their information on the goals for the district, and we had talked about amending the agenda slightly. So now that the end of our agenda, instead of being a Board of Education update, but instead then be kind of where the goals are that we've set and where we're at, and just kind of reviewing that on a monthly basis instead.
I'm wondering whether or not we should push it back slightly, only because I think the appraisal will be here in about a two-week period. I don't know.
So the week of the 17th, you're thinking instead?
Might be better, because we might have that information.
So our board, our next board meeting is the 25th, correct?
Tuesday's work for me, either the 11th or the 18th is mine.
I'm good with the 18th.
That's gonna be, that week is very, very hard for me. I could, I could probably only do Monday that entire week.
Oh, that's your birthday week.
What's that?
It's your birthday.
It's my birthday weekend, Jean's gonna be out of town. Three kids with three sports.
Yeah, I could do the 17th.
Monday's my...
I can do 17th.
Belinda, could you do Monday, the 17th?
We do have a personnel committee, a finance committee that...
It's during the morning.
Yeah, in the morning.
It's in the morning.
That would be fine.
Could we do the 17th then?
17th is fine.
Does that work for me?
What time? 6:30.
It works, yeah, that's what you should do, right, 6:30. Okay, thank you very much for scheduling that.
Time, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, yes, please. I think that is all we have, and like a motion to adjourn, if I get up a second, please?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right.
Jack Miley.
Hi.
Belinda Grassi.
Hi.
Tom Heck.
Hi.
Steven Jeffries.
Hi.
Jennifer Harden.
Hi.
Motion carried. Thank you all very much.
It's October 17th. I wanted to see...